All right, you're all set to begin, Herb.
All right. Okay.
You're all set.
Okay. This is the zoning board of appeals meeting for the town of Barnstable, October twenty seventh um at seven P M, more or less. Uh to all persons interested in or affected by the actions of the zoning board of appeals who are hereby notified pursuant to section eleven of chapter, chapter forty A of the generalized Commonwealth Massachusetts that uh and all amendments thereto, that a public hearing on the following appeals will be held on Wednesday, October third, twenty twenty four, as time indicates. Uh zoning board of appeals will be held by remote participations methods tonight. Uh public access to this meeting shall be provided in the following manner. The meeting will be televised live via Xfinity Channel eight or high definition channel ten seventy two. It may be accessed also via the government access channel livestream on Town of Barnstable's website. And I hear somebody is not muted. Um so. And that website is H T T P hyphen backslash backslash streaming eighty five dot Town of Barnstable dot U S backslash cablecast public site backslash watch backslash one question mark channel equals one. Uh real time access to the zoning board of appeals meeting is available utilizing the Zoom link or telephone number and meeting ID provided below on the agenda sheet. Uh public comment can be addressed to the zoning board of appeal utilizing the Zoom link or telephone number and the meeting ID provided below. Uh the two meeting options are, as we said, um either by Zoom uh on a telephone line, uh you know, cellphone line or by Wi Fi. Um first method is uh calling toll free to eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine H T T P S backslash backslash Town of Barnstable U S dot gov dot U S rather. Um zoom dot U S uh backslash one backslash eight three nine nine four nine zero nine nine one four um or on the Zoom app, it's meeting ID eight three nine nine four nine zero nine nine one four and the meeting ID. Why is that said twice? Anyway, same thing, eight three nine nine four nine zero nine nine one four. Applicants, their representatives and individuals required or entitled to appear before the zoning board of appeals may appear remotely and may participate through accessing the link or telephone number provided above. Documentary exhibits and or visual presentations should be presented, submitted rather, in advance of the meeting to Anna dot Brigham at Town dot Barnstable dot ma rather dot U S so that they may be displayed for remote public access viewing. Copies of the applications are available uh for review by calling five oh eight eight six two four six eight two or emailing Anna dot Brigham at Town dot Barnstable dot ma dot U S. Uh I'll now call the meeting to order and introduce board members. Um Manny Alts.
Present.
Larry Horowitz, sorry.
Present.
You want to say, how many people want to say Horowitz? I'm one of them. Uh Aaron Webb.
Present.
Mark Hanson.
Present.
And I'm Herbert Bodenseek, acting chair. Um first order of business is to uh state the notice of recording, the meeting of the zoning board of appeals is being recorded and broadcast on the Town of Barnstable's government access channel in accordance with M G L chapter thirty eight, section twenty. I must inquire whether and anyone is recording this meeting and if so, to please make their presence known. Um first, we have minutes from October ninth, twenty twenty four. I wasn't not, I wasn't present at that meeting. Um so what has everybody had a chance to view those?
So Chairman, I make a motion that the many, meeting minutes be approved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, okay, roll call vote. Manny Alts.
In favor.
Larry Horowitz.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
And Mark Hanson.
In favor.
Okay, and I'm not going to vote because I wasn't there. Uh next, we have um new business that is um planning to uh continue and we're going to move that up in front of the old business, which there are two uh cases of and in the interest of not keeping anybody that was interested in um uh case appeal number twenty twenty four zero three six um around unnecessarily. Hold on a minute while I pull that up so I can actually read it.
Herb, you want me to read that into the record?
That'd be great because I don't have it in front of me.
Awesome. So again, new business, appeal number twenty twenty four dash zero three six Hyannis Series Four LLC has filed an appeal of administrative official decision in accordance with two forty dash eleven parentheses A parentheses one principal permitted, permitted uses in the R B uh comma R D dash one comma and R F dash two residential districts. The appellant seeks to overturn the order to assist, I'm sorry, to cease, desist and abate dated August second, twenty twenty four. In the notice of zoning ordinance violation letter, the chief local inspector stated that they observed a violation of chapter two forty dash eleven parentheses A parentheses one, namely, an apartment created on the second floor of a building used as a lodging house. The property's not owner occupied and is not eligible under chapter two forty dash forty seven uh point one family apartments or chapter two forty dash forty seven uh period uh number two accessory drawing units for a second unit as of right. The subject property is located at forty eight Greenwood Avenue, Hyannis, Massachusetts, as shown on accessory map two eight nine as parcel one thirty eight. It is located in the residence B uh R B zoning district. And I believe the attorney is here representing the uh appellant uh and he's asked for a continuation. So Attorney Alva, all yours.
Thank you very much.
You are on mute, Attorney Alva, you're on mute.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you very much.
After communicating with uh Mr. Florence yesterday, um we discussed this and uh we reached an agreement that I would go ahead and file the continuance because part of the crux of our appeal has to do with the state legislation, the legislature has passed a new law that goes to effect in February that could make this entire matter moot. So therefore, we are requesting the continuance until um after that date. And according to the form that I received today from the, which I signed on behalf of the uh appellant, um the extension date would go till April of next year, by which time this board would have, be able to make a decision and we'd be asking for a hearing in um March of next year.
Attorney Alva, that's March twenty sixth, I believe, is that correct?
Uh yes, I think so, right, that was what was on the form, but they, it gave the board additional time until to respond.
Can I make a motion then? Please. Uh I'd like to make a motion to continue appeal number twenty twenty four dash zero three six to March twenty six, seven P M.
And I'll second that. Um a roll call vote on accepting that request to withdraw. Um Herbert Bodenseek, I will vote in favor. Mark Hanson.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
I'm in favor.
Larry Horowitz.
In favor.
And Manny Alts.
In favor.
Okay, thank you. You have your continuance until March twenty sixth of next year.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. And now going back to old business. Appeal number twenty twenty four zero thirty four, Mannheim Realty LLC has applied for special permit pursuant to section twenty two forty rather ninety one F merged lots. The applicant seeks to transfer a lot twenty eight, which is current presently part of seventeen Hawthorne Avenue, lots three and twenty eight.
I believe that's two B.
F, pardon me?
It's two B.
Two B.
I thought that's, that looked like a two B. You change glasses. They're good. What do you know? Two B, thank you. Um I kind of thought that's what it was. To nineteen Irving Avenue, which is presently comprised of lot one and lot two A. With the requested relief, nineteen Irving Ave would be comprised of lots one, two A and two B. Seventeen Hawthorne Ave would be comprised of lot three. No additional building lot is being created. The subject property is located at nineteen Irving Ave, uh Hyannis, Mass. As shown in an assessor's map, two eighty six as parcel zero zero six, it's located in residence F one, R F one zoning district. And this was continued from October ninth and I would assume uh there were no members assigned. Does that be correct, Anna?
That's correct.
Okay. Um I will assign all members present, um being five of us. Um do we have a um presentation by the applicant?
Yes, uh good evening, Chair Bodenseek, Attorney Schultz for the record on behalf of Mannheim Realty LLC and good evening, uh members of the board. As set forth in the introduction, we're seeking to transfer lot two B, which is presently a part of seventeen Hawthorne uh to nineteen Irving Avenue um in Hyannis Port. The properties, and maybe a picture speaks a thousand words, Anna, if you're able to share my letter and in particular exhibit one, which would just show the board that the composition of the lots.
Okay, just give me one second.
Sure, and and as that's coming up, I'll just continue to go through for the board and if anyone uh has any questions. So in in two thousand and four, uh in July, Mannheim Realty LLC purchased nineteen Hawthorne Avenue. And then in uh later on, they purchased seventeen Hawthorne. In two thousand and seventeen, they purchased twelve Atlantic Avenue, which was a previously developed but then existing vacant lot. And they took title in a separate entity, twelve Atlantic Avenue LLC, uh pursuant to an A N R done by Cape Serve. They cut that lot in half into lots two A and two B and they conveyed lot two A to nineteen Irving Avenue and lot two B to seventeen Hawthorne. No additional buildable lots were uh created at that time. It was just a um a reconfiguration of twelve Atlantic. And because we were making both of those lots less nonconforming at the time, no zoning relief was needed. Uh with this appeal and under two forty ninety one F, the applicant, um because the lots are presently uh they're merged um and they're all held commonly by Mannheim Realty LLC, we're proposing to transfer lot two B to nineteen Irving Avenue. And what we're doing at that time with the conveyance, we're making seventeen Hawthorne Avenue um more nonconforming, which requires the special permit under two forty ninety one F. Uh based on the following, I would suggest um that this appeal fulfills the spirit and intent of the ordinance and satisfies the requirement for the issuance of a special permit. Uh one, the application falls within a category specifically accepted in the ordinance for the grant of a special permit. Um two forty ninety one F does provide that along with two forty one twenty five C that the board is authorized to issue a special permit. And secondarily, after an evaluation of all of the evidence presented, the proposal fulfills the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance and would not represent a substantial detriment to the public good or the neighborhood affected. And in support of that, we would submit that the proposed transfer of lot two B, uh which you can see now, uh that has come up, uh lot two B would be um added to nineteen Irving, which would be comprised, uh if this is approved, it would be lot one, lot two A and lot two B and seventeen Hawthorne would remain as its previously existing and historic configuration. Um again, we're not creating any additional buildable lots um and we're maintaining the single family nature um of the neighborhood and would not represent a substantial detriment to the public good or the neighborhood affected. I would be happy to take any questions if you have any, thank you.
Does anyone have any questions?
I I have one. Uh Attorney Schultz, when when twelve Atlantic was bought, what's what is now two A and two B, was that a buildable lot?
You know, it was, I believe. It was a buildable lot. It was previously developed. Um what happened to that house, I'm not sure. I believe I heard that it had burned down, but the uh they paid full consideration uh for the property and never redeveloped it.
And and when two B was conveyed to seventeen Hawthorne, uh was that in connection with any development of seventeen Hawthorne or why was that done?
No, um what if, so lot one, which is nineteen Atlantic.
Yeah.
And lot three, seventeen Hawthorne, those were purchased by Mannheim Realty in two thousand and four.
You mean nineteen Irving?
Nineteen Irving, yes, I'm sorry, and seventeen Hawthorne.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, no, sorry about the confusion. So those were purchased in two thousand and four. Thirteen years later, this property or twelve Atlantic became available and it was purchased. And the the intent at that time, there was, they didn't need to rebuild it, um and they just wanted to add the pieces uh to the lots that they had previously purchased. So there was just just adding area to the lots.
Thank you. And I have a procedural question for Anna. Um do we need to vote on opening the hearing and then assign members?
Um yeah, I think you're fine, yeah, the way you've you've done it. I mean, you you read in the into the record and assign a member, so I think I think it's good. You're fine. Thank you.
Very good.
Okay. Just a quick question, um just a, just a clarification. Attorney Schultz, so currently lot one and lot two A are held by Mannheim as well or or are two, two A and two B, who who holds those two lots currently?
Mannheim as well, so all four. So lot one, lot two A, lot two B and lot three are all held by Mannheim Realty LLC.
Okay.
And by a deed in two thousand and nineteen after this plan was prepared, there was a deed from twelve Atlantic for lot two A that was added to lot one and a deed for lot two B from twelve Atlantic that was added to lot three. And so now what Mannheim would like to do, so they intentionally merged them at that time, they're all in common ownership, they would just like to convey unassociate lot two B from lot three and add it to nineteen Irving. So nineteen Irving would be comprised of lot one, two A and two B.
And and so seventeen is becoming less nonconforming by by peeling off lot two B, is that why you're in front of us?
Exactly, more nonconforming, so we're making it um more nonconforming.
And then is lot one, two A and two B, that's going to become one lot or it's just common ownership?
That's going to be one buildable lot, so we're not creating anything additional here. Um and and we can't, we're just uh for conveyance purposes, lot one, lot two A and lot two B will be considered one lot.
That will be considered one lot. Is there a plan showing that as one lot? Was there, was there a a plot plan put together showing that as one?
Uh this this plan right here, so yeah, um this plan would continue to be referenced. All that would be done is a deed of conveyance, which would um get one, two A and two B um that would be considered all reflected in the same deed, if that makes sense. So they would all be referenced.
As nineteen Irving Avenue?
Correct.
And so that will will that um so any other reference to the other two lots will only be to nineteen Irving Avenue? But they'll all be considered one lot, they'll all be considered one address at this point forward, should this go forward?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And and just just to follow up on that, so one, two A and two B will be, just to reiterate what what I think you just said in response to Mark's question, that will be nineteen Irving.
That is correct.
And that is still a nonconforming lot for this zoning district, correct?
That's correct, but by, if we were to have this approval, we would be making that lot less nonconforming as we're adding area to it.
You'd be, seventeen becomes more nonconforming and the combined lots become less nonconforming.
Correct.
Okay, so these lots are not considered mer- uh merged at this point? Any of them or?
They they were previously merged, so they're all in common ownership, so they're they're all presently, um they're just reflected as separate lots, so lot one, lot two A and lot two B and lot three, they're just separate pieces to a pie.
So it's kind of like an area squaw, more or less?
Exactly, that's all that it is.
All right, uh does anyone else have any concerns or questions? If not, we can uh request public comment. I guess we have none or? Do we know, Anna?
Um if there isn't anybody present at this, at this meeting, uh we did not receive anything um in written form.
Very good, um so we'll bring it back to the board for discussion. Um does anyone?
Herb, I think we need, we need to close public comment, so I'll I'll make a motion to close public comment.
Second. Okay, uh roll call vote, um I'm in favor for Bodenseek, Mark Hanson.
I'm in favor.
Aaron Webb.
I'm in favor.
Larry Horowitz.
In favor.
And Manny Alts.
In favor.
Okay, um.
Anna, do we also need to close the public meeting?
Uh i- if you're ready to close the public meeting, would you um have any more questions for Attorney Schultz?
Okay, I'm sorry, so we're, I might have jumped the gun, I apologize.
I I have one and 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 probably an unfair question, Attorney Schultz, but if there were to be any development in the now combined lot, nineteen Irving, which is one, two A and two B, would that be done as a right since it, or because it's a nonconforming lot, would they need to, would it need to come before the zoning board for some sort of relief?
No, it it wouldn't, uh would be like any other sub two acre lot in the town. Um I think the only reason that it would get before the board is if they, right, and and the lots do in combination exceed ten thousand feet. Um so I I think that depending upon what they submitted, it could potentially be as of right, um unless there was some provision of the zoning ordinance that made them come before you.
Yeah, that's fair, thank you.
Yeah, it certainly assists with the lot coverage aspect.
Yeah.
So I mean, it makes sense and where they're commonly held, I mean, it's not like uh we're not trying to reverse something to peel off one piece just, it's not like we're peeling off lot two B just for lot two B to be sold.
Understood, no, no, I get it.
Or developed potentially as a, as another lot, which is usually what we see.
Yeah.
I have no issue.
Understood.
Okay, if that's all the concerns we have, um I would make a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, J, um Herbert Bodenseek, I'm in favor. Mark Hanson.
I'm in favor.
Aaron Webb.
Favor.
Larry Horowitz.
Favor.
And Manny Alts.
In favor.
Um now, if we want, if uh we want to discuss this, deliberate, if you will, does anyone have any thing to say?
So.
Well. Uh just a quick question maybe for um for Attorney Schultz, does this um as far as future development, um it, is there anything that's going to change with this new housing bill that's that's coming down the, coming down the pike as far as the, how this could be developed by by adding this land?
No, absolutely not. The way that I view it is we we had, we had those two bookend pieces, just simply adding a little bit more to lot, uh to nineteen Irving, that will remain a a single family lot. Um and seventeen Hawthorne would remain a single family lot.
Seventeen remains, okay.
Right, so there, so seventeen, when it was bought in two thousand and four, was a four bedroom, single family home on lot three with a pool, and that's what we're going to end up with today. Um that's all that we get, we get nothing more. Nineteen Irving gets its, it's a three bedroom house with extra land, so it just provides a a more contiguous figure all the way from Irving Avenue to Atlantic.
Very good. All righty then, would anyone like to make findings?
Listen, I.
I'm looking at Mark.
I would love to, I do not have access to the um uh to the meeting materials.
Uh. Anyone else?
Does anybody have it on their screen?
I I have it, I could do it.
I was about to call and hear myself, but go ahead.
Okay, so um the application for special permit number two two twenty four dash zero three four, Mannheim Realty LLC has applied for special permit pursuant to section two forty ninety one F merged lots. Applicant seeks to transfer lot two B, which is presently part of seventeen Hawthorne Avenue, to nineteen Irving Avenue, which is presently comprised of lot one and lot two A. Uh with the requested relief, nineteen Irving Avenue would be comprised of lots one, two A and two B and seventeen Hawthorne would be comprised of lot three. No additional lots being created. Um I make the following findings on the application. The application falls within a category specifically accepted in the ordinance for a grant of a special permit, specifically because the the this is allowed for pursuant to the grant of a special permit under section two forty dash ninety one F. Uh based on the evidence presented, um no new lot, buildable lots being created, uh and this would not represent a substantial detriment to the public good or the neighborhood affected, there's no uh public comment on the matter. Uh and it is consistent with the uh terms of the ordinance. And and as I said before, it would not be more detrimental to to to, uh would not represent a substantial detriment to the public good of the neighborhood affected. And lastly, the single family nature of the property and of the accessory nature of the detached structure preserved, so. And lastly, the single-family nature of the property and of the accessory nature of the detached structure preserved. So nothing is being changed there. Those would be my findings.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, roll call vote. Uh, Aaron Webb?
I'm in favor.
Mark Hanson?
I'm in favor.
Herb Boden Sieg?
I'm in favor.
Manny Alves?
I'm in favor.
And Larry Horwitz?
I'm in favor.
Okay.
And as to conditions, Attorney Schultz, they're listed as number one, two, three in the staff uh, report dated September twenty-sixth and revised October second. Do those meet with your approval?
Um, actually, can I add something here uh just before we agree on that? Um, just kind of running back to that um, that new um, the new filings coming down from the state, um, I'd like to at least add if it's agreeable to the attorney that this land is not uh developable until it comes back to the board. Because it it in in that you can, in the future, you'd be able to unmerge this theoretically and build on it. So as it goes right now, if there's something they can build as of right, that's one thing. But if they're looking to develop that lot, you know, break it out and develop it, um, I'd like to see that come back to the board.
Let's talk about that because that that was what I was thinking about, Mark, when I asked if the originally purchased lot, twelve Atlantic, which was divided into two A and two B, was buildable to begin with. And the answer was yes. So in essence, if they could have done that, I I take your point. So let's let's, I guess, let's hear from Attorney Schultz. Is that a condition you could live with, sir?
From the the new law that just went into effect, and that condition would only apply to that particular new enactment, is that correct?
Well, the law hasn't gone into effect yet.
It hasn't, but just if it were to go in that if this is, you know, going to be developed, that it comes back to the board first. That's all we're asking.
So Mark, Mark suggests some language. So for for the newly created nineteen Irving Avenue, which is lots one, two A and two B, any, I guess I'm trying to understand what what the condition would.
Is this lot over ten thousand square feet? Two B?
No, it's not. Two B is not five thousand six thousand five hundred and four square feet.
Now, are we asking about the combined three lots, one, two A and two B, or just? What's the question? What's the answer?
I think there has to be a ten. I'm not sure if it's if it references, I I apologize because I'm not as familiar with the intricacies of the bill, but it it has to be over ten thousand square feet, but I just don't know. What I'm saying is there might be a possibility of then unpeeling this and and putting a three up to a three-bedroom house there. So I'm just saying, if it if that is the intent, you know, currently we're just making one lot, they're able to use it, develop it potentially by right. I'm just saying if they come back and that is the intent to take it off again and put something there, that it just come back to the board, that's all.
So I again, in my my opinion, I think we've seen this before, that the verbiage would simply say that nineteen Irving Avenue is considered, you know, fully built out at this point. Well, I don't. Makes sense? Would that apply?
No, because I I think. No, because then they could develop it on their, without doing anything. If they want to just develop that as one lot, they can. But if they're, I'm speaking specifically, if if they're looking to, under the new potential law, come back, unmerge it, and put a three-bedroom house there, just like to see it come back for review, that's all.
And and Marx, just so I understand, what you what you mean by um, break it up again?
Theory, in theory, they could, they could, if this passes and it becomes law, they could unmerge the lot and potentially put a house on there.
You mean separate two A and two B?
Yes.
Out. Yeah, which goes back to my.
My understanding. So I'm just saying, I'm not saying, I'm not trying to limit it. I'm not trying to say they can't, just saying that if that's their intent, that they'll just come back for review.
My understanding, what little there is of, uh, I think it's chapter one fifty, uh, the bulk regulations still apply, um. So it's, I mean, almost moot even talking about a bill that hasn't doesn't sound like it's even been come written completely yet. I don't know.
These are tight, and we're we're saying as part of this that no new lot is being created. And so there's no worry for us currently that they're going to try to separate this or try to build on it. It it's tight quarters down there, right? So that's all. I again, it's I'm just voicing an opinion here.
No, I I hear you, Mark. And and I guess that's the part that that I thought. I had a similar concern, but I got comfortable with the, clearly, the the bylaw says no new buildable lots can be created, and none is being created here. And if they were to attempt to create a new buildable lot, they'd need to get approval. So it's almost implicit.
I it's as of right, but I I could be wrong.
You think, oh, you think they can create a new, okay.
I I think so, that's.
I think there are significant limitations to it. Um, and that's my 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 cursory reading when it first came out. I I think there are some pretty some some pretty significant limitations about um, right, size, size of the lot, composition of the house. You don't have an unfettered right to build, you know, whatever you want. I think it's it has to be a certain size, which does exclude, I want to say it's like seventeen hundred square feet. Um, but again, I think we're you know, A, it's hypothetical, and B, it's a um, we're we're in a multimillion-dollar neighborhood.
I'm aware, yeah, that's why I'm saying normally, I don't know, it's it gets sensitive, right? We've had a few things that have been separated. We we, you know, there was a, there was a something we missed at one point a couple of years ago, and it ended up in the formation of another lot in a very tight area. It it, you know, it eventually got sold. Um, I I was voicing an opinion on.
Yeah, how about, I mean, I would be comfortable with with language, right, in the event that the owner of nineteen Atlantic Avenue seeks to unmerge lot two B in the future? If the act passes in February of two thousand and twenty-five, then the applicant or the owner shall come back to the zoning board of appeals. Is that?
That's fine with me.
Is that fair?
That's what you're looking for.
Yes.
Yep. Wow, works for me.
So even a little more general, how about uh any future reconfiguration of these lots uh must be brought before the zoning board of appeals? Then it's not referencing any future laws or anything.
That's a good idea. I like that one, too. Um.
Well, yeah, well, the law has passed. It just hasn't taken effect yet. So it's really just, it, I if that's, what do you think, Manny? Does that work for you?
Yeah, that works. I mean, if the applicant's okay with that.
Yeah, I I think that 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 is more eloquent eloquently phrased by Chair Boden Sieg, so thank you. Um, conditions two and three, though, I I do have concern over those. I don't know whether the board has looked at those. So we're we're already on a preconstructed site, so that the site does exist, as shown.
So there's no construction there.
So I think number two should be stricken, and then to the extent on number three, that we, of course, record this to take the benefit of the um, the special permit. I'm happy to have that done, but it says prior to the issuance of a building permit in condition three, that we're not seeking a building permit, we're just transferring a lot. So I think that prior to the issuance of a building permit should be struck.
So and it at building division?
Correct.
So we'll read the decision shall be recorded at the Barnstable County Registry of Dismal in court, and copies of the recorded decision shall be submitted to the zoning board of appeals office in the building division. I'll stop.
Here it is.
Okay. Okay with that. Uh, and you recommend striking two? And then and so what is currently three becomes two, and the new third condition, you want to rephrase, reiterate what the chairman said?
Um.
How do we reference the site map, though, if we take out two?
Doesn't doesn't that also go to your uh comment, Mark, about future development?
Well, this is almost, the the language is almost as if they are going to develop it, and they they're not currently, but um, maybe we could just reword that. It was a reference to that document, right?
Instead of site development, why don't we say that the lots will be reconfigured in conformance with or as outlined in the plan?
At least, there has to be some sort of reference to that document.
To which one? To the plan?
The one by Cave Serve, the two thousand nineteen document. If we take two out, it it doesn't reference that document.
It's it's your exhibit one, right?
That is correct. So that's my exhibit one.
Yeah, so i- 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 I guess what I'm hearing is, and tell me if I'm wrong, i- 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 instead of site development shall be constructed, about the the lots will be reconfigured, if that's the right word, as outlined in the plan entitled Plan of Land. Does that work?
Well, we're not reconfiguring the lots. What we're, well, the lots are going to stay the same, so maybe the the lots are shown on plan book six eighty-three, page fifty-six.
About the lots will be transferred. That is what you're asking for.
And they will be, yes, transferred.
As outlined in the plan.
Yes.
Okay. Mark, Mark, does that make sense?
Yeah, I just, I I guess technically it doesn't, it it doesn't really have a separate plan showing it as one lot, so we, I just want to reference what we've been talking about. There's no reference to it if we, I just want to reference it somehow, so it's in the decision.
Right, and was, is that what we just did? I mean, I'm happy, so the site development shall.
No, I guess what I'm hearing is we strike that part. Um, how about just saying the 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 lots in question, in question are referenced in the plan entitled, and that way we reference the plan.
Yeah, as long as we can reference the plan, I it's weird because we're not trying to develop anything. We're not actually doing a swap. It's not showing it. It's just um, you want to not reference the plan. It's what the whole thing is based on.
Well, actually, paragraph or condition one describes exactly what's going on. And if the wording from paragraph two was simply.
Oh, so just.
Part of it was added to paragraph one to the effect that, you know, no additional building being created, subject property located, blah, blah, blah. Um, as shown on plan entitled Plan of Land at twelve Atlantic Avenue, right, and so on.
I like that.
So if we could just add it, that'd be the best, yeah.
Yeah, that's eloquent. So we we merge two into one.
Yes.
And then and then aftermath, just say as shown in the plan entitled Plan of Twelve Atlantic, yeah.
Yes.
And and strike the first part of what's now two, uh, until the word with.
And then we've wordsmithed uh condition three, and then we're just gonna rename that condition two. We're going to add a condition three. Uh, basically that the lots will not be uh.
Developed?
Redeveloped, well, subdivided or what?
Any future reconfiguration must must come before the board again?
Yes.
Yes.
Short and to the point.
That works.
Attorney Schultz?
Sounds great. Thank you all for your patience.
All right, we need to vote on the conditions as re as severely edited.
Very good. Uh, so we need a motion to approve. I will move that we approve the conditions as we've discussed. Do I have a second?
Second.
Um, all in favor, Manny Alves?
I'm in favor.
Larry Horwitz?
Yes, I'm in favor.
Aaron Webb?
In favor.
Mark Hanson?
I'm in favor.
And Herb Boden Sieg, I'm in favor. Uh, you are all set, Michael. Thank you for coming in tonight.
Thank you, everyone.
Taking the big trip.
Have a nice night.
Thank you. All right, next order of business. Appeal number twenty thirty, twenty twenty-four, zero thirty-five. Um. Hold on a second. Can I put the right glasses on here? This is a I accept growing old, if that's all I have to worry about, is which glasses I'm wearing. Uh, Christopher Tripp has applied for variance pursuant to section two forty dash fourteen E bulk regulations in the R C one and R F residential districts. The applicant seeks a variance to the front yard setback to construct a pool with a six-foot fence around it. The applicant proposes to reduce the front yard setback to fifty-nine point nine eight feet, where one hundred feet is required along Route twenty-eight. Subject property is located at twelve Geraldine Road. Petuette Massage shown on assessor's map forty or zero four zero as parcel zero zero nine. It's located in the Residence F, R F zoning district. This was continued from October ninth. Again, I assume with no members um assigned.
Correct.
So I will, I will move that we go forward with this case. Uh, do I have a second?
You still have to sign.
I'm going to do that after. That's the new, at least that's the way I read it. Um, so do I hear a second that we move ahead with this case?
Second.
Okay, in favor, Manny Alves?
In favor.
Uh, Larry?
Yeah, I'm in favor, just reading.
I'm in favor.
Mark?
In favor.
And I'm in favor. Um, so now I will so assign all members present, and uh, looking for a presentation by the petitioner. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye.
Have a good night.
You can proceed, sir, if you'd like, state your name and who you represent.
Oh, okay, uh, all right. I'm a representative, Christopher Tripp. Uh, my name is Mo Sirovic, what you call me, Mo, much easier. Um. And uh, let's say, uh, you guys are in favor with the pool and building, for me to build in the pool?
Oh, that's what we're here to uh discuss and decide on after we've heard the various.
Right, right, right. Okay, correct. Sorry, I'm I'm my first time on a a a, so uh, that's why I got him uh confused. So um, he likes to put a pool. Um, actually, as you guys see it, um, it won't meet the um, the distance from Route twenty-eight. Um, everything I did, I don't know if you guys has any uh photos I take uh before, um, put it the meeting together, the 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 together. Um, everything is protected from twenty-eight, uh, have evergreen privacy, is has a fence by twenty-eight from, like a twenty-eight from any angle of a twenty-eight, it cannot see the pool, and then uh in addition, is going to be put a six-foot uh closing fence together. So, um. You guys can see it, uh, where's the pool is going to be here. Uh, and um, unfortunately, we try everything uh to avoid that, but uh his sept and leading field is all back. So only place he has to put it that a pool is right there.
Okay. Um. Anybody on the board have questions for the parti- petitioner?
Yeah, I have a quick question. I'm not sure if they're going to be able to answer this. What is the current lot coverage? And what is the proposed lot coverage after the pool and decking and any other? Is the uh, is that pergola that is referenced, is that a to be built? Is that?
Not that to be removed.
It's removed? Is are they planning on putting another one in there or another structure?
No, no, has to be removed because it's going to be exactly uh, uh, um, on the pool is going to be exactly on the corner. So what we did, we tried to maximize and get it close to the houses possible um, to make more distance. Um, to make more distance from, uh, Route twenty-eight.
So this lot is about half an acre? Does that sound right? About twenty-three square feet?
Yes, correct.
And currently structures, I I mean, it doesn't look like a huge house, but it is. Um.
I think the house, if I'm not wrong, is, uh, fourteen hundred square feet.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it doesn't look like it's, there's enough structure there to go. Is it thirty percent in this? Uh, Mr. Chair, I can't remember. Or Manny, does anybody remember? Is it point three?
Yeah, I think it is.
You've got a house, a garage, some other dwelling, and now you're gonna have the pool. So the question is, is that falling under point three, if that's what's required? That we're sort of missing some information here. Oh, there we go, lot area.
Hmm.
Oh, it's small. So their lot coverage is only ten, ten percent?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it would get to thirty.
No.
I mean, the question here is, is, this is, this is an application for a variance and and and. I, I, you know, we have very specific. Criteria and standards we have to meet to approve a variance, and I haven't heard.
Haven't heard.
Any of the problems being addressed. Uh. Right? I mean, it's. We've, we've talked about this as a board in the past about what do we do pools? Right, is there something related to the soil condition, shape with topography of this land that that we're looking at the first prong of the requirement that that? Affects this particular property but not others in the in the neighborhood. I don't see any. I mean, where's?
So Manny, I would argue to that fact that the, um. Of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it's located. So. There is no other place to put that pool, given the fact that the tank, septic, bleaching field is behind the house.
No, no, I, I mean, we could, we could, I guess let's proceed with the hearing and we can get the big back. Within the, when, when, when we deliberate, but I think what that means is that. This particular lot is uniquely, there's something unique about it, unlike other lots in the area, not within the lot. And 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 this is, we've had this conversation about pools generally. I think our zoning bylaws need to address this because.
Yeah.
It's just, it it's, I I I find it difficult, and I I don't mean to tell you how I'm going to vote. For anybody to meet these conditions, if all they do is wanna put a pool in their lot. Because. Uh, there's a hardship. Where, I mean, and 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 in this case, what's so unique about this lot that that would entitle it to a relief? As opposed to any other lot in the, in the zoning district? Anyway. Mr. Chairman, we should proceed. I I I.
Yeah, I agree.
I'm, 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 I'm willing to be convinced.
Well, my, my, um. What I see as being different from other lots, um, that aren't along twenty-eight is. Um, a hundred-foot setback. I mean, it's only got eighty-eight point seven right now, but I'm sure that's because it was built most likely. I thought I read it was built not. A hundred years ago or anything. But, uh, anywhere else, um, fifty-eight point nine eight feet of front yard setback would be more than enough. And it's, it's a corner lot which imposes, you know. The usual problems that corner lots impose. Uh, but I would say that makes it. Uh, kind of approvable in my mind. Or as, at least as a reason to justify the three-prong test. Anybody else have a?
We can, we can move forward. We could just, we could discuss it out there and see.
Okay.
Exactly, yes, public comment or.
Is the applicant, uh, Mo, are you done presenting at this point? Any other things you wanna add to your application here?
Uh, no, I don't think so. Um, I s- I I put it together some photos too. Um, the buffing from twenty-eight, um. I don't know if it's, uh, together. You guys haven't. Uh, but, uh, like I said, from twenty-eight, even from the corner of Geraldine Road. Uh, no one can see it, um, just kinda can see only half of the house. And, uh, like I said, we're gonna put it fast, six-foot fast, a close fence all the way around. So, uh, that doesn't gonna disturb any neighborhood or take it attention from who driving from twenty-eight, you know? Um. Especially twenty-eights of his road.
All right. Mr. Chairman, you want to open up public comment? I will do so. Um. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this matter?
Um, well, I'm not from the public. I'm the, I'm the applicant, but, uh, I just wanted to. Uh, I don't even know if I can add it to the files, but, uh. Sixteen Old East Osterville Road, three miles. Um. East from here, I guess you'd say. Uh, you know, they're a corner lot, same same corner as I am. And they have a pool that's thirty-three feet off the road, which is less than half the distance of what I'm proposing to do. And it's also the pool's in a gully, so. Um, I don't know exactly what the concern is. Um. But I I mean, it's been allowed in the past, so I I guess that's the only thing I wanted to add, you know, to the argument.
Thank you.
Yep.
Now, is there anybody from the public, uh, the actual public, uh, who would like to speak? Not that you're not actual public.
He's the owner.
Um. Okay, why don't I, um, close public comment? Um. Do I hear a motion to close public comment?
Motion to close public comment.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, yeah.
Okay, uh, all in favor? Manny?
In favor.
Larry?
In favor.
Aaron?
I'm in favor.
Mark?
I'm in favor.
And I'm in favor. Okay, um. Uh, I suppose we can just go ahead and close public hearing too. I will move to do so. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Manny?
In favor.
Larry?
In favor.
Aaron?
In favor.
Mark?
In favor.
And I'm in favor. Um, now we'll go back to deliberation among the board members. Um. I hear some concerns here. Um. Has anybody been by the site to actually, I mean, we're all probably pretty familiar with that area because we go up and down twenty-eight all the time. Um. But it seems that, I mean, I didn't get out with a tape measure or anything. But it doesn't seem like sixty feet is a whole lot to ask. There's different little businesses that are, I'm pretty sure around that, um, setback from. Uh, Route twenty-eight. Anybody else have any? Feelings on that one way or the other? Because he satisfied all the other setbacks. Yes.
So. And I. Again, I I think what Manny was saying, and I I kind of agree here, is that we've been down this road before. A pool is, you know. It's not a hardship. If they, if, say there was land taken by eminent domain in the front or. Something like that, that 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 made it that way. At minimum, if we were talking about this, we need an engineered, you know, surveyed plan. To to make a, you know, a true decision, but but honestly, these variances are 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 supposed to be hard to come by. They need to meet the criteria. I just, I I just don't see, um, how this is a true. I mean, I understand the septic is where it is and that there's maybe not ability to move it, but this really does not. Fall under the, what we would normally consider requirements for, you know. The the real need for a variance here and I. And believe me, I understand, but we, you know, this is not the first one to come in front of us where it just, it. That can't be the hardship that it's pool or no pool. Now, what if it was a garage?
It.
Doesn't make a difference.
I don't think it makes a difference because. Yeah, I mean, it, in a way, our hands are kind of tied here, because this is framed as a request for variance. And first, with grant of variance, we need to make a finding on each one of these three prompts. And 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 I think this is something that as a town, we need to address. Because, and and I appreciate the applicant's position, I I clearly sixty feet, you know, that 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 seems like enough of a setback, right? But you're asking us to, asking this board to change what the elected body, the town council. Has approved as the bylaws, and for us to do that and and be and be honest to the law, we we have to. Go through each of these prompts. And and one is, there's something unique about this lot that is different from similar lots in the neighborhood. I don't know that that works here. There are lots of corner lots. Is is a little enforcement would involve in substantial hardship? I don't see that. So I I again, I I I'll. I'm inclined to go with the board's consensus on this, but I think we have a, as a town, we have a problem. Because I I don't think leaving applicants like Mr. Tripp to just. Have to go through the variance approach is fair because those standards are tough to meet. Um, so. I I I don't, I don't see how I I can find affirmatively in each of those prompts to approve this, even though I think it has merit.
It does, and we have, but we've turned down at least a half a dozen with the same situation. They have not been approved. There's been at least two in Osterville, but it was, there was, uh. Three in Osterville that I can think of right off the top of my head. So I mean, that. I I agree that, you know, it. We we have mentioned this before, that this is a gap. Like some of the signage, like some of the lighting issues that we're running up against, and we're, we're trying to bring that to the, you know, the board's attention, but. Um, I don't know how you get there, and honestly. You know, you really do have to argue those points, and there's nobody arguing those points here.
Argue those points. Real quick, again, I I just, this is, this is, I agree, Manny, one hundred percent. But it's absurd that this gentleman who wants to put a pool in. That abuts Route twenty-eight is gonna be denied that right because of. You know, whether it be at the town level or, um, you know, for our inability to. You know, again, see this lot. And the structures on the lot are preventing him from putting the pool elsewhere. So. Uh, I don't know. Again, I I ran into this the last time in Osterville when we had a lot coverage issue with that young family that wanted to put a pool in. That was gonna exceed lot coverage, and I was unable to make the argument, and he came back two, three, four times, unfortunately for him. Before we finally came around to approving it. This, in my opinion, is way more clear-cut. He's not. Breaching lot coverage percentage at this point. So, I mean, I'm trying, I'm trying desperately here to figure out how to word it in such a way to make it agreeable. Um. It's more than, you know. Can somebody help me a little bit?
With this, he's way, way under with the lot coverage, so he's funny.
Not even, yeah, we're not even broaching that subject. So again, he's faced with, the hardship in my opinion is, A, he wants to put a pool in, and he should. Be able to. By right. He's not, again, I know what he's doing. He is asking, again, for relief on setbacks, but he's got a lot here. We all agree. That the fifty feet from the border of Route twenty-eight should not be a deterrent for somebody to be able to put a pool in. Nobody on the public has come forth to say that's gonna be detrimental to the neighborhood. We all agree that there's no such, you know, that's not gonna be the case here. So. Again, we have to figure out a way to, in my opinion, really, it's number one, that is the. What's holding us back here from from approving the variance, and I do understand that we've been down this road before. We've had, you know. Educational sessions on variances, um. You know, again, I look at the lot, I look at the structure, I look at the placement of the garage, I look at the septic system. There's nowhere else for this guy to put his pool. That he, again, I think we all agree. Should be allowed to put in on his property. He's not doing anything, um, so. I don't know. Somebody needs to help me, I guess, with the verbiage about how we can get there and, um.
Aaron, I think you're, uh, talking about the, uh. First condition that we'd have related to soil condition, shape of topography. And I I agree with you that it meets that, uh, test, but. I don't see, where's the substantial hardship? Financial, where where is that? I I I have a problem with, I don't see that as part of this.
Substantial hardship, in my opinion, again, in my opinion, is that he wants to put a pool in. And so if we deny him that, the hardship is he's gonna have to move. I mean, you know, he wants to have a pool on his property.
You have a right to use your property.
What's that? I'm sorry, Herb?
Right to use and enjoy your property. I think that's kind of the hardship.
Okay.
That right is being infringed. Um. But I think I just thought of some other, uh. Uh, opposite of the way I've been thinking, why is there a hundred-foot setback to begin with? And I don't know if I feel actually now comfortable with, um, some, somebody. A body of, um, legislators of some kind. Uh, they didn't just make up that hundred-foot buffer. They had a reason for that, and. I would wanna know more about why that was established. If, do you follow?
But to your point, Mr. Chairman, everybody along twenty-eight has that same restriction. It's not your unique.
Exactly.
And that same setback.
Yeah, I think that's where I'd be uncomfortable, uh, just arbitrarily saying, okay, you can put it there, but. When the gas station wants to do something within, usually it's a fifty-foot buffer. But, you know, then I'll have a hard time saying no to them if I allow this, so.
We know pools to be an issue. This is something the town council has to make a change on. This is, we we don't rewrite that.
But we have pools along twenty-eight that are.
Unfortunately, Mr. Tripp, unfortunately, public comment's been closed at this point, so, sorry. Yeah, I I, you know, Herb, that's, that's more, you know, I guess, I guess valid in my opinion than.
Um, really any of the arguments, but.
Mark, do you know if this has been raised, or maybe Anna, town council, is the town working on coming up with a specific ordinance to cover pools?
Not to my knowledge, but I can ask Jim Cooper.
Yeah. I mean, I I agree with everything that's been said. I think Mr. Tripp should be allowed to do this.
Yes.
Unfortunately, the only vehicle that he, the the only road he can take to get there is through a variance. And a variance is a tough hill to climb. We, as a board, we need to make, to to make those specific findings and. And and a hardship cannot be, if I can't do it, I suffer a hardship, because then that's circular. And everybody meets the hardship requirement. So and this has come up, as Mark said, in the context of pools in the past. Where it it, you you feel for the applicant, you want to approve it, but. As a zoning board, I I I, as a member, I I don't see how to get there from here. On a variance.
No.
I I I just think this is, there's something that town needs to address and and.
And I would agree. I I I do agree now. I mean, I I do see that. So, Mr. Tripp, your options are to go ahead with a. Allow the board to make a ruling at this point. I think you've heard, uh, you know, some pretty detrimental discussions, uh, uh, for your case. Your other option would be to withdraw without prejudice, uh, and go back and work with your town councilor. I don't know, maybe building department, maybe there's a way to, is there a way to swing this into a special permit versus a variance? I, again, you'd have to do some. Legwork to, uh, but if you go ahead and allow the board to vote.
Osterville, but not in my house, I guess.
What'd you say?
It's allowed in Osterville, but not over here at my house.
But we're not, we can't, we're not here to to be debating what's been allowed previously and so forth. But, but we're not, we can't, we're not here to, to be debating what's been allowed previously and so forth. So, again, you have two options. You can allow the board to vote. If you are denied, you will wait two years before you come back. Or you can withdraw without prejudice and do some more legwork and come back before or sooner.
We're going to ask what the more legwork would be because we've already gone through the town to get a permit.
That's all right. We'll get the yard back together anyway. Yeah, if you guys can go ahead and vote, that's fine.
But you could also, if you withdraw without prejudice, you could hire, uh, possibly legal advi- uh, um, a lawyer. Uh, and who can dig into why this setback exists and uh, we, I, I think it's
I got a business on the front of us on, on the left, so I, I think I, I think I understand.
But what would you like us to do? Vote?
Yeah.
It's gonna, it'll, it'll prevent you from coming back to us for two years.
I, I would, I would hedge against that.
Yeah, just, just, you know, just withdraw.
No, it's fine. Let's, let's just vote and get it over with and, uh, we'll move on. In public, public opinion, we'll hopefully prevail.
Sir, this will stop you from petitioning for two years.
That's fine.
Doesn't cost anything to just withdraw without prejudice? And then you can
Forward this way. Thank you.
He's without counsel. I, I feel this. I mean, we can move forward, but I, I would really strongly suggest doing the other.
Wrong way to
Drawing.
Need to hire counsel. I barely have money to build a pool. You know, I'd be doing most of the work myself, but if you guys are gonna fight me on this that much, I understand.
We don't want to fight you. We just, we just want to work in your best interest here. We're trying to work in your best interest.
Mr. Tripp, just withdraw. It's, it's pretty simple.
Vote on it and let's move.
Okay. All right. He wants us to vote. Let's vote. So, somebody's got to do findings.
Yeah, it'd be easier if, um, you were, you were to withdraw because it
Mr. Chairman, he wants us to vote. So, let's, let's, I will read findings at this point and, um, we can, um, we can
Anna, are we allowed to abstain or do we have to come to a decision?
That's what I was just gonna suggest.
Um, well, I, I yeah, you really do need to make a decision. Unless you want to continue it. Um, and I don't know what the, the timeframe, the time, maybe they need a time extension, but
Want to make a motion to continue?
Second.
To a date certain?
Yes, please. Um, what's the next, next meeting?
But to, wh- what if we were to refer this back to Jim Cooper and his group? Because if we, if we continue, we're gonna be in the same position.
Just vote on it. I think you guys have your mindset up. You guys seem to know what's right. I think you should vote on it and get it over with. I'm gonna be in the same
Sure. We're, we're trying to make this work for you somehow. Uh, but our hands are tied in certain respects. And we need to be, you know, we need to make the law equal for everyone. Uh, but we're, we're on your side. I hope you can hear that. If we
Anna, is there a date? In sometime in, you know, early December, maybe that's open at this point?
Uh, December, December eleventh.
Yeah, that's the only one we have in December.
Great. So, I make a motion to, to continue this to December eleventh of twenty-twenty-four.
I'll second that. I will second that. Um, all in favor? Manny, odds?
Well, I'm inclined to vote yes, but what's gonna change between now and December?
That's my point. Yeah.
Well, I'm hoping that someone, you know,
I mean, the problem is, the town has a problem because I, I, Mr. Tripp has the right to do what he wants to do. And, and unfortunately, the way the rules are written, uh, because we don't have anything uniquely addressing pools, he's being cocked.
Uh, I think two things, you have two things could happen, Manny, which would, we could get clarification from planning regarding what might have prompted them to have a hundred-foot setback on Route twenty-eight. Get that question answered at minimum. But also, you know, I know, maybe buy some
I'm understanding. Sorry, guys. I, I respect all you guys' rules. I'm just here stating that. We already have all these pools along twenty-eight. I don't understand how mine's gonna be any different. I don't.
So
Speak to what already exists.
Yeah, it doesn't work. Unfortunately, Mr. Tripp, it just doesn't work that way. I wish it did, but it just doesn't. So, um, so that would be one piece that we would get clarification on. Yeah, I hear you. I, 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 I'm tempted to say the same thing, Manny, quite honestly. He, the applicant wants us to vote, why postpone it? But we have the motion on the floor, so are you, where do you stand, Manny?
No, I'm, I'm okay. I, I'll vote in favor and let's hope we get clarification or something from town that gives us the ability to move forward.
Well, procedurally, can we vote to continue without being petitioned by the petitioner? Uh, to continue?
Yes, yes.
Anna?
If, if, if the board is seeking some additional information, you can.
But at the same time, it seems that the petitioner, uh, isn't really interested in pursuing it, even though we're hoping that it can go his way if we continue it.
If anything happens within side of two years, he's, and it goes his way, he's unable to come back in front of us. Doesn't withdraw, so we, there, there are several things, including pools, lighting and signage, that we are trying to bring to the attention through our liaison to the town. That is one of the things, because we were, we're running up against it. So, if something were to happen in a year, in six months, the petitioner would not be allowed to come back in front of us unless they withdraw.
I'm not gonna withdraw. I think you guys should just vote. Get it over with. Wait.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I just have to say one thing. You know, we, we keep on saying that there's, uh, that pools, it's just not clear to us. Uh, if we have, if we get another one of these, uh, appeals, we're gonna be saying the same thing. Is there any way to, again, I understand the petitioner just wants to vote, but as a board, can, can, is there any way we can refer this and get some guidance for the future?
We have to bring it to the town.
I thought that had happened, Mark.
Um, I don't know specifically for pools. We had only been
Cause I remember Jake mentioning it's pools and lighting, as you said, that, that seems to be a gap in the rules.
Yes.
Um, and, 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 and I think Mr. Tripp is caught in this.
Yes, I agree.
Uh, and, but I thought, Mark, uh, Jake had mentioned that, Anna, do you know if it was raised with town or?
I, I'm not aware. I really don't know.
Well, I don't need any lighting in pool. I can swim in the dark.
That's pretty good. Oh, man.
All right. So, again, Mr. Chairman, where are we at? We have a motion on the floor to continue to December eleventh. Are we gonna follow through with that?
I would be in favor of that myself, but can we?
So, finish the roll call and let's move on here.
Okay, can I mean, the petitioner wants to, w- w- wants to, uh, you know, us to vote and
I get it, but again, there's a motion on the floor to continue to December eleventh. Manny's in favor, Herb's in favor. What else? Mark?
I'm in
Aaron? Herb. I mean, Larry.
Yeah, no, I'm in favor of that.
Let's put it to a vote.
Yep, he already has.
Manny?
I'm in favor and, and hopeful that something will happen between now and then.
Yeah. And Larry?
I agree with Manny just said, definitely.
So, you're in favor?
I'm in favor.
Okay, Aaron?
In favor.
I knew it. Uh, Mark?
I'm also in favor.
And I'm in favor. So, well, we're gonna continue this. This is a pretty, uh, different situation here. Um, and hopefully, we can get the machines in operation and find out some things before December eleventh.
We can, we can reach out to Betty and, you know, get this on the agenda. Let's see what we can do. We already know, um, the other two things. This just sort of reinforces it.
Yeah. And, uh, Mr. Tripp and Mo, um, that's gonna be remote participation meeting as well, so um, it will be, you don't have to go down to town hall to go to the hearing. You can just stay at home like you are right now. And hopefully, we can make this work.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Night.
Okay. That is over for now. Um, let's see, moving right along.
So, before we do, Anna, just, just for my edification, what would be the procedure?
I mean, i- i- is this something that we need to go through legal to put before town council?
I, I think you should start with the, um, zoning board of appeals liaison, the, um, town council liaison.
Okay.
Eddie Legkey.
Right. I, I, I don't know. I, I, I was only the question that Jake may have already done that, but if, if, if not, I, I think we should because it, this, this is, I feel bad for Mr. Tripp. Oh, he's still on.
All right, all right, guys.
I thought you
I'll see you guys on December eleventh.
All right. Very good. Yeah, like, one of the questions I would have is why is it a hundred-foot setback out in Kachua there? And I believe it's fifty-foot setback in many of the, uh, business districts in Hyannis.
I think it's broader than that, Herb. Even if it was a twenty-foot setback, if the pool was gonna encroach into that setback, right? It's impossible, in my way of thinking, to get a variance for a pool. So, the, the, I think that we need to think about having a, a, a zoning ordinance that specifically addresses pool. I mean, and, and the issue with pools is, is, you know, are you putting some kind of protection around it? Are you shielding it enough so that visibly you're not, you know, exposed? And there are all kinds of ways to get there and if you meet those, maybe it's not a variance, maybe it's a special permit. Much, you know, less steep hill to climb, I think.
Well, this was such a different case because technically, it's a front yard setback that's being applied. But that is anything but a front yard.
Yep.
Um, so it's unfortunate.
Yep.
And if it was anywhere else, it would be a twenty-five or thirty-foot setback. Uh, unless it was on a major highway like that.
I don't, I don't, and we gotta be careful not to continue to talk about
That's true. We need to go along to the next order of business, which is correspondence. Uh, we have a letter from the Cape Cod Commission Subcommittee, um, that they're gonna have a meeting for a sandwich community health center to be held on October twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-four at five P M. Uh, do we have any matters not reasonably anticipated by the chair? I haven't Uh, and upcoming meetings, uh, November thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four, that'll be remote, December eleventh, that'll be remote, and then January eighth, twenty-twenty-five, we'll be in person. Um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
You do. Second.
All right. And all in favor? Manny? Manny's already done.
I'm in favor, sorry.
I'll score a drink.
Larry looks like he's in favor.
I'm in favor, yeah.
Uh, Aaron?
Yes, I'm in favor, Herb.
Mark?
In favor.
And I'm in favor. Thanks, everybody. That was actually a kind of a good discussion there.